Yeah. All right, it's about three oh one and we will call this meeting of the Board of Supervisors to order and I will look over to County Council and ask if we have a need for closed session this afternoon.
Yes, Mr. Chair, there is need for closed session and I do anticipate an announcement out.
All right, that being the case, we will, we will make the announcement out as soon as we're, as soon as we're done with closed session and but before we go in, we do have, Vice Chair McCary has a recusal, I believe.
Mr. Chair, I have a statement I'd like to read in the record. It says, it has been brought to my attention that I received a campaign contribution of more than $250 from a party with respect to today's agenda item B within the 12 months prior to the proceeding that this is the subject of the agenda item, excuse me. For that reason, under Government Code Section 84308, I must recuse myself from making, participating in making, voting on, or in any way using my position as a supervisor to influence a decision regarding this agenda item. Therefore, I am excusing myself from this part of the board meeting and will not discuss or take part in a governmental decision with respect to the matter. The clerk is requested to make this announcement part of the official public record of today's meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Chair. So we will now.
I too have.
I'm sorry, also Supervisor Shecklian has a recusal.
Yes. Mr. Chair, I too have received a campaign contribution of more than $250 from a party with respect to today's agenda item B within the 12 months prior to the proceeding that is subject of the agenda item. For that reason, under Government Code Section 84308, I must recuse myself from making, participating in making, voting on, or in any way using my position as a supervisor to influence a decision regarding this agenda item. Therefore, I am excusing myself from this part of the board meeting and will not discuss or take part in the governmental decision with respect to the matter. The clerk is requested to make this announcement part of the official public record of today's meeting. Thank you.
Thank you Supervisor Shecklian. Do we have any others? All right, hearing none, then we will convene into closed session. There will be an announcement out at the conclusion of closed session and then we'll reconvene at six o'clock this evening for open session at Dinuba City Council Chambers at 405 East Elmonte Way.
Right there, that's exactly where we're going to be. Welcome everybody, thanks for coming out to this evening for our October 17th meeting of the Board of Supervisors and we're going to start this evening with an invocation by Pastor Michelle McGee and she's from Palm United Methodist Church here in Dinuba. Now we'll have the Pledge of Religion led by Supervisor Valero directly after.
I'll be off, I'll be offering a bilingual prayer. I invite you to be in a prayerful attitude with me. Oremos. Fuente de vida y esperanza, source of life and hope. Gracias por estos siervos civiles y su compromiso para el bien común. Thank you for these civil servants and their commitment to the common good. We pray for this meeting today and always. For wisdom, patience, to listen well to one another. Pedimos sabiduría, paciencia, y poder escucharnos bien. Help us through decisions we make to care for all, especially the most vulnerable. Ayúdenos por las decisiones que tomemos hoy a cuidar a todos especialmente los más vulnerables. May all that we do lead to true justice and peace for all. Que todo lo que hagamos nos lleva hacia la verdadera justicia y paz para todos y todas. Que tu presencia, fuente de vida, esté en medio nuestro. May your presence, source of life, be in our midst. Amen.
Please join me in saluting our nation's great flag. Ready, pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Supervisor Valero. Started off and next we're going to go to item number one. This is our Board of Supervisors Matters.
First matters may I to be announced without a closed session? Thank you, Mr. Chair. Announcing out for item C, the Board of Supervisors directed legal counsel to refrain from opposing debtor's motion to establish a reduced taxable value of the personal property located at debtor's former retail store at 3125 South Moonie Boulevard, Visalia, California, in the case of Inri Bed Bath &amp; Beyond Inc. at all debtors, United States Bankruptcy Court, District of New Jersey, Case Number 23-13359VFP. A roll call vote was made upon motion by Supervisor Shecklian, seconded by Supervisor Vanderpoel. The motion passed unanimously. Reporting out for item E, the Board of Supervisors authorized legal counsel to initiate litigation. After the action is formally commenced, the title and nature of the action, the defendants and other particulars will be disclosed to any person upon inquiry unless to do so would jeopardize the county's ability to effectuate service of process on one or more unserved parties or would jeopardize the county's ability to conclude existing settlement negotiations to its advantage. A roll call vote was made upon motion of Supervisor Vanderpoel, seconded by Supervisor Valero. The motion passed unanimously. And that concludes today's report out.
Thank you, Madam Counsel. All right, and then we will go back to Supervisor Valero for Board of Supervisor Matters.
All right, thank you, Chair. These past few weeks have been very busy. I want to give kudos to the Tulare County Hispanic Leadership Network for its recent event titled From Classroom to Leadership: Building the Instructional Pipeline. It was a full packed house with administrators, leaders, and educators who want to continue improving their talents in the academic area. And so I want to also commend Yolanda Valdez who's here, who serves as the Regional Director for the entire state. Tom Rooney, Superintendent of Lindsay Unified, gave a keynote on his own journey and the experience leading to an impressive school district that he leads here. So it was a great event overall. That same evening, I attended the Cutler Consolidation Meeting and there were a good amount of residents there just expressing their concerns, understanding what it means for consolidation and what it means in terms of the state, working with the local PUD to make that happen. I also participated in the Audit Committee meeting where we reviewed and accepted the Health and Human Services Agency cash receipts cycle risk-based audit report, reviewed and accepted the internal assessment report, and we also approved the update to the two-year audit plan for fiscal year 2023 and 2024. I then attended the Care Portal Active Community Gathering where my colleague Pete Vanderpoel showed on the panel. It was a great time to learn what Care Portal has done with partnerships created between faith institutions, the county, and agencies willing to support our most vulnerable communities. That evening, I rushed over to the Monson-Sultana Elementary School Carnival and then the Ivanhoe Trunk or Treat Event, and then followed by the Hands in the Community Fundraiser at the Convention Center. It was great also to attend the United Way Annual Breakfast and Recognition Awards where my colleague Amy Shecklian served as the MC. She did a great job. Always great to hear about individuals who are working hard to improve our and uplift our communities. This past weekend, including lots of events also, I participated in the Lions Club Car Night Event where I did not go home with the 1991 Miata. I also said goodbye to my reign as the inaugural Dancing with the Stars Tulare County 2022 Dance Competition on Saturday night and shared remarks to this year's participants. Young Live puts on this annual event to help support its youth and Teen Moms programs, giving them hope, direction, and mentorship. So I'm hoping maybe Supervisor McCary will be next in line for the dance. This year's winners included TCO Superintendent Tim Hire, who was best in dance, and then Deena Gambini, who raised the most funds, over 20,000. And in total, more than $65,000 was raised on Saturday night. On Saturday, well-hosted the San Joaquin Valley Water Summit. In attendance were 40 local leaders from throughout the region. I welcomed the audience to Tulare County and shared the challenges of the region. And so this was an event where community water outreach experts shared the best practices for engaging input and design and implementation of water conservation strategies. And then also researchers shared inform, information on the multi-benefit land repurposing program and the changes needed to improve environmental conditions for residents throughout the region. And then last night at our Tulare County Regional Transportation Authority, we selected our TCRTA Director after a few months of that search. Today, I attended the College Pledge at the Fresno City Hall Chamber where Josh Friday, the CEO of California Volunteers, welcomed a new cohort of students and got them ready for job corps placements across the Central Valley that they will be doing for the next two years. This week, I will be attending the Kings Basin Water Authority Board Meeting, then a debrief and review of Saturday's World Conference, and then I will be heading over to Sacramento for the remainder of the week to attend a workshop on realignment dollars. And then lastly, I just want to congratulate Emmanuel Munoz, who is a resident of Dinuba, and he recently received the 2023 MacArthur Genius Award and also Cornell MFA 90, 1998. And if you don't know, but the MacArthur Genius Award comes with $800,000 per awardee with no restrictions attached. So he will be receiving $800,000. And so it's a prize awarded annually by the John D. and Catherine T. MacArthur Foundation to typically between 20 and 30 individuals working in any field who have shown extraordinary originality and dedication in their creative pursuits and a marked capacity for self-direction and are, again, creative in their work that they do. And so, again, he's native of Dinuba, but is a current professor at the University of Arizona. And that is all I have, Chair.
Thanks Supervisor Valero, and I'm going to skip over to the other name and go to Supervisor Vanderpoel.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Appreciate the opportunity. Good evening, everyone. Great to be here and even better to have microphones. Make your voice sound fuzzier than it usually is sometimes. A couple of things I wanted to go over this week. We have on Thursday a pretty significant event that has been months of effort by not only Tulare County but Kings County and multiple partners, and that is the formal unveiling, Community Outreach Event pertaining to the Kings Tulare Master Plan for Aging. I have served on the Kings Tulare Area Agency on Aging for 15 years, and this is the first area plan that we put together ever. And this is really just an effort to make sure that residents have the ability to age well and live well in Kings Tulare County regardless of their status in life, senior, et cetera. So I really look forward to seeking and obtaining community input there and having the formal plan be presented to attendees. And again, appreciate those who have served on the steering committee and also Dr. Helen Miltiades from Fresno State who has been guiding us throughout this process and the SCAM Foundation as well who put out the grant and put forward the grant that we obtained through Dr. Miltiades for this effort. I think that this, having a cohesive plan is critical. I'm also going to be participating in a forum this week regarding a recent LAFCO decision and also the future status and information from the city and county regarding the Goshen Community Services District and the City Vice Director and various annexation subjects. So look forward to that.
Putting, putting out some clarifying information from my perspective as one member of LAFCO. Friday, the Dairy Herd Improvement Association of Tulare will be having their annual golf tournament and I will have the opportunity to participate in that event. And then on Monday, I'm celebrating a personal milestone, but I do think it's worth mentioning. And also, I treat everyone like family and one thing that families celebrate is wedding anniversaries. So I am celebrating my 13th wedding anniversary with my wife. So very proud of that and looking forward to celebrating. So I, I'm very happy about it. I don't know if she feels the same, but I'm, I'm hopeful that after 13 years she will. So that's all I've got, Mr. Chair.
She deserves a medal.
We'll have that next week.
Yeah, we're going to present her with the proclamation.
Yeah, you want to, you want to report us how that went next week? Get the Board of Supervisors Matter.
All right.
All right, thank you, Mr. Chair. Since we haven't met for a couple of weeks, it's already been said. I just want to highlight some, some things. I'm sure everybody has heard. I think on our last meeting or two meetings before, we got our crop report and we weren't sure where we landed, but we landed at number one over Kern. Yes, over Kern and Fresno County. We always jockey, but we're all in line and we're all in it together. And I think it's, you know, true that we do feed the world right here in the Central Valley. So that was a nice thing. I attended the Nordstrom Rack Grand Opening at the newly remodeled Sequoia Mall in the, in the city of Visalia. Also the Cinnaholic Downtown, a new cinnamon roll shop there. On a week ago Sunday, I also hosted or emcee the Tulare County Historical Society BBQ at Moonee Grove Park. And Supervisor Valero did mention I also did the United Way. I also, last Friday, was a part of a panel for the Visalia Chamber of Commerce Leadership Visalia Group, which one of our own board reps is a part of that. So very happy to see that. And then also took place in the Visalia Centennial Celebration at their National Night Out with Supervisor Valero and Supervisor McCary. A few things coming up this week. Tomorrow, I have a Homeless Task Force meeting at 1:30 at our probation department and those are always streamed live on Facebook on our HHSA Facebook page if anybody wants to join in and see all the great things that are happening. And then tomorrow night, I will be cooking, hosting, well, not hosting, it's somewhere, somewhere else, but I've been preparing over the last three days, if I smell like onions, marinating shish kebab and making meat for stuffed grape leaves. During the Salt and Light Event recently, I donated an Armenian dinner that they auctioned off and now I have to cook it. But it will be good. I smell like my grandma, but that's not a bad thing. Then on Thursday, I will be in Fresno at my San Joaquin Valley Air Pollution Control District Board Meeting, coming back and attending our Parks Advisory Committee meeting. And then that evening is a night under the stars at the Kuya Oaks Preserve. Saturday night, I will be attending the Vice, the Tulare County Sheriff's Barn Burner for their PAL Program. And then I just, lastly, want to say, Visalia lost a great community leader and investor in Visalia and Mike Fistolera. Monday will be his celebration of life that I will be hosting. And I just want to say he was a great guy. Thank you.
Thanks Supervisor Shecklian. We'll go to Vice Chair McCary.
Well, good evening, everyone. You know, I'd like to start off with asking everyone to please think and pray for the family in Strathmore. 5:30 this morning, I was briefed by Chief Norman that we had a fire. Two children are deceased and it's very, the certainty of the rest of the family is unknown, but it's a very tragic event. So I ask you to please keep his family, your thoughts and prayers. Lot of different events. I mean, this has been literally, I have multiple events stacked up all at the same time, seven days a week, but just some of the highlights of what we talked about is I met with the Resource Management and the Linnmore Irrigation regarding a potential program in Strathmore for the Char Lake. We're in discussion with that. Hopefully, we can do that and use it for flood control as well as recharge to help our water situation in that area. And I hope we can continue moving forward with that. There was a National Night Out event at Calvary Visalia. We were all invited to. It was a great event, well-attended, and very supportive of our local public safety people there and staff and all the departments were, were there and it was very good. We had our health fair and I went to that and that was amazing. And we also had the, the workforce event next to it. And you wouldn't believe all the people in there looking for work and applying for work and trying to go. And, you know, right now, we're losing, I, I've been notified that, you know, there's a place in Exeter is going to lose like 300 people. They're laying them off. We have other businesses will get noticed. And so there's a lot of companies shutting down. So a lot of people are hurting and looking for work. And it was a great turnout there. We had LAFCO, the Southern California Edison Multicultural Celebration was a great event. I attended last year. We all attended. Most of us attended this year and it was a great turnout. We had the Miss Exeter Coronation Dinner. Last week was the Exeter Fall Festival. So they have something nearly every night. We did attend in Farmersville, the Tulare County Area Traffic Incident Management Meeting where Caltrans gave updates regarding all their different projects countywide for the Area Six. And it was pretty informative. And Supervisor Town and I actually had a meeting, what, three weeks ago, four weeks ago? And from then to this meeting, it changed. The plans changed on some projects. So a lot of this is really fluid and we're trying to work with them and they, they're really good about keeping us informed of what's occurring. Library Advisory, we had a family fall, Exeter Fall Festival Family Night. That was amazing. They had a petting zoo. They had a pumpkin carving contest and it was great to see all the families, everybody out there and just having a great time. We had our joint meeting with the SARA, which is our Retirement Board and the Board of Supervisors. And we had our annual joint meeting and things seemed very positive there. I think we were kind of not certain how that was going to turn out, the way things were looking with the economy, but it seems like that there may be some light at the end of the tunnel. I was invited to the Lindsay Foothill Rotary where we met with their local district governor. And that was a great time there. I left there, went straight to Hands in the Community Dinner. And so we ended up Supervisor Valero and I were there and that was well-attended. And then followed it up with the United Way Breakfast. We talked about that. We had the Visalia Station, that's not out, the Purple Party and the Happy Trails Roundup. That was all the same night, same time. I just went from one to the next. And then I attended the Food Truck Festival in Lindsay and then the Sierra View Foundation, KT AAA and TCAG. So it is literally seven days a week right now. I didn't touch on almost everything that we had and there's a lot more. So it's a very busy time. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Chair. And I, I'm not going to touch on all the ones that, a bunch of those ones that have already been mentioned. Our Rotary Club did have our district governor from District 5230 visit this last week. And one of the highlights of that is that the, the interact, the Rotary Clubs show up and they're very healthy in Porterville on the high school campus, on the junior college campus there. And so there's some just really, really, really quality kids coming up through the system right now and showed up and it just makes you proud when they're there. So it was great to have the district governor and all the youth visit the Rotary Meeting. And then I guess it's been mentioned, the TCAG TCTA meeting in Porterville. I did want to thank Porterville for opening up their fire training facility for us to have that meeting out there. We're, I think we're out there about once a year and we appreciate them opening that up. And then Vice Chair McCary mentioned this, but I'm on the Sierra View Foundation Board in Porterville raising money for Sierra View Medical Center. And we had our Rock and Roll for a Cause event and it was just a gorgeous night to be out. I remember the last year it was pretty hot about that same time of year. So it was really nice out there. And I haven't got the, the final of what the, how many, what the funds were that were raised, but they will be helping to support the, the catheterization lab there in Porterville with some, with some new equipment with the proceeds from that event and the golf tournament that the, that the foundation puts on. And Supervisor Vanderpoel mentioned that we will both be sitting in on a forum regarding some LAFCO annexations and sewer issues, Goshen area on Thursday. And then Saturday, I will be attending the Treasure Trove by the, the Porterville Exchange Club puts on every year out at the Exeter Memorial Building. And I'm just going to stop right there. There's a lot of stuff going on. It's that time of year. Next, item number two on the agenda, we're going to present a certificate recognizing Alta Healthcare District for its many contributions to northern Tulare County. And I've asked Supervisor Valero to make that presentation.
All right. Thank you, Chair. At this time, I would like to call up Yvette Batello, the President of the Alta Healthcare District, along with Javi Guevedo, board member, and Yolanda Valdez, who is actually a recipient of the Alta Healthcare District Grants. And so, Yvette, if you would like to just come up and, and briefly just share what Alta Healthcare District does. After that, I've asked Yolanda Valdez to also share a few words and then I will share and then present you with the plaque.
All right. Didn't have anything planned here. Alta Healthcare District was in bankruptcy for many years and we finally came out of bankruptcy. And in that time, I think it's been four to five years, we've been able to fund different projects that are needed within the Alta District. Anywhere from, what are those called? AEDs? Yeah, we gave out about 38 AEDs. We helped Cutler-Rosi with a walking path along with exercise equipment. We helped City of Dinuba with two ambulances and I think a third one may be in the works. Gosh, we've, we've just done a lot.
Thank you. Thank you so much. And then Yolanda, and Javi, if you'd like to.
Well, I just want to thank the Alta Healthcare District in Cutler-Rosi, an unincorporated community, your community, probably your largest unincorporated community. There are very little, there's very few resources. One of the things that we have done in the community is really focus not on the challenges that we have as a community, but on what we can do. And I want to thank several of the directors here from Tulare County and Supervisor Valero, who has really helped us go out and obtain resources so that we are able to build a sports complex that the district did build for the community and for the use of students, primarily for the use of students, but we, we have it for the community. But what was really, really special is, is this collaboration between the Alta Healthcare District and this project. When you think of the community of Cutler-Rosi and the health challenges, the diabetes, the obesity, the health concerns of that community, and then you give them a facility where they can go out and take charge of their health. That's exactly what has happened. Any day that I'm having a low day, I go out there and drive around that sports complex. And what you're going to see is mothers pushing their children through the walking path. You're going to see people of all ages in the exercise equipment. And I passed up by there going to a school today and there was this young lady, man, she was making me tired just watching her. But they're using that equipment. They are becoming healthier. And what the, what a great gift that you give a community health. And that is exactly what we've done with this collaboration. So I want to thank, and, and there's a little, a little joke here because they both are standing together and they should be because they both belong to this committee, the Alta Healthcare District. So I just want to thank you. Thank you for investing in the exercise equipment at our sports complex. Thank you for investing in the lighting because we know that it's not lit up early in the morning and it's not lit up or it goes dark very early now. And you can go out there and people are walking and exercising early in the morning and late into the evening. Thank you so much.
I just want to say thank you to Alta Healthcare and also for the, to the school district. Eddie, thank you. Board members, thank you for everything you do for our community. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
I also would like to thank all of you for having a broad vision for what's to come for the entire community and the region. So we appreciate that very much.
Awesome. With that being said, the Alta Healthcare District is an organization committed to supporting the well-being of children, youth, and families in the communities it serves. One way in which the district achieved this goal is by providing grants to organizations that share its mission. And again, these grants are designed to support a variety of initiatives, as mentioned, from after-school programs to mental, mental health initiatives to physical fitness and community health safety. Alta Healthcare District has also sought community support and Alta Healthcare District has also sought community support and feedback. This was achieved through a recent community forum by engaging with community members. The district was also able to better understand the needs of the community and tailor its resources to meeting those needs. The impact of the Alta Healthcare District's contributions to the communities it serves cannot be overstated. By supporting initiatives that promote this well-being, the district is helping to build stronger, healthier communities. Through its grants, community engagement and commitment to improving the lives of those it serves, the Alta Healthcare District is making a meaningful difference in the lives of countless individuals across Northern Tulare County. So with that being said, this is a certificate of recognition in honor of Alta Healthcare District's continued contributions to Northern Tulare County. Thank you for your unwavering commitment and also to partnering with the various nonprofits, school districts and organizations in our communities. Signed by District One Larry McCary, District Two Supervisor Vanderpool, Supervisor Amy Shucklian, District Three, myself, Eddie Valero, District Four, and our Chair, Dennis Townsend, District Five. So what we will do. Oh, we can. I guess we'll take a picture. We'll come into the well and then if you want to stand and then.
Very good. And with that, we will move on to item number three on our agenda, which is our time for public comment. Anybody wishing to address the board this evening on an item that is not on the agenda, but that's pertinent to board matters? Doesn't look like anyone in the crowd. Do we have any written correspondence or emails?
We do not.
Okay. Last chance. Okay, we'll close the public comment time then, and we will move on to our consent calendar, which is items four through twenty-six. And do any of the board have any they'd like to pull for separate consideration or comment? I don't see any, anyone in the crowd like to pull any for separate consideration. All right, seeing none, I will bring it back to the board for motion.
I move to approve.
Second.
We have a motion by Vice Chair McCary, a second by Supervisor Shucklian, and we have to do a roll call on this. So if Madam Clerk, if you will take a roll call.
Supervisor McCary?
Aye.
Supervisor Vanderpool?
Aye.
Supervisor Shucklian?
Aye.
Supervisor Valero? Supervisor Townsend?
Aye.
Motion passes five zero.
All right, thank you. We'll move on to item number twenty-seven. Request from the clerk to the board to appoint a member and alternate member of the Board of Supervisors to serve as a representative on the California State Association of Counties Board of Directors for the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four association year.
Yes, Mr. Chair, this is our annual appointment for a member of the board to serve as its representatives on the California State Association Counties. We would need a board member and an alternate, and we currently have Supervisor Shucklian, who is our board member, and then Supervisor Vanderpool is your alternate.
All right, I'll bring it back to the board for nominations.
Mr. Chair, I think we should keep the slate the way that it is. I think Supervisor Shucklian does a great job for us as the main board member at CSAC, and she never misses a meeting, so the alternate's not needed.
That's a bonus right there. All right, we have a motion by Supervisor Vanderpool to retain the same slate. Do we have a second? Second by Supervisor Valero, and we'll have a roll call both.
Supervisor McCary?
Aye.
Supervisor Vanderpool?
Aye.
Supervisor Shucklian?
Aye.
Supervisor Valero? Supervisor Townsend?
Aye.
Motion passes five zero.
All right, thank you. And thank you Supervisor Shucklian and Supervisor Vanderpool for being that alternate that doesn't do anything, but thank you very much. Just like, thank you for being there, man. All right. All right, we'll go to item number twenty-eight, which is a request from the Resource Management Agency to approve a financial assistance application for a financing agreement from the State Water Resources Control Board. And we have Ross. How you doing?
I'm doing well. How are you?
Good, good.
All right. Good evening, Chair Townsend and Supervisors, Mr. Britt, Ms. Flores. My name is Ross Miller. I'm a chief engineer with the Resource Management Agency, and I'm here to talk to you about East Rosy and the grant application before you. I'll try to keep it fairly brief, being that a lot of us have dogs to get home to and some of us probably families, but with that, East Rosy is a smaller community in Northern Tulare County, a population of about nine hundred. The East Rosy Community Services District previously provided them with water and sewer services for about a hundred and three water connections with a service area of about fifty acres. And a while ago, the state Water Board approached the county and worked with us on an agreement that led to the county becoming appointed as the administrator for the water system in East Rosy. This means that the county has taken over. We are responsible for the provision of water. We do the budgeting. We do agreements. We do everything on behalf of the district. The district still exists. They still provide sewer service. We are just the water provider for them. This appointment started in November of twenty twenty-two and was effective for two years and it can be renewed. As part of this, we have a separate agreement with the state that under the SAFER program that also provides for reimbursement for any costs that the county would otherwise be out of pocket for the operation of this water system. So we have money to be the administrator and then what we bring in from the customers is supposed to cover all of the costs to operate. And if there's any shortfalls, the SAFER grant picks up the rest. The administrator program has a big focus, which is how to basically end the administrator program. It is, once someone is assigned, where do we take it from here? How do we get it? So there's a new permanent operation. And in the case of East Rosy, the project since before we have, we as a county were appointed, has been to connect the East Rosy community to the water system in Rosy as well as providing a new well as part of this project. Checking my notes to make sure that I haven't missed anything important on that. The, this construction project will include a new district, new water distribution system in the community of East Rosy. It will include the pipeline between East Rosy and Rosy. It will include a pipeline from Rosy to a new well site that we are working on purchasing from the she has left, but the Cutler Rosy Joint Unified School District. And the ultimate project again is to connect all of that with the Rosy PUD becoming the full-time operator and owner of this new system and its expanded form. The project is currently in design. As of a few days ago, we have sixty percent plans that have been completed. The total construction timeline looks like it would end in late twenty twenty-five. The program that we are dealing with here is called the Emergency Sorry, give me one second. EDWG, Emergency Drought Water Grant, I believe. That sounds correct. And this program is basically designed to help streamline the Water Board's review process. Some of their processes can take about a year before from the submission of the agreement until we would get a, or sorry, from the submission of the application until we would get an agreement back to sign. So this is kind of expediting that, reducing some of their lead time. Unfortunately, because of the way scheduling works, it doesn't, you know, them taking nine months less to review does not unfortunately result in a total of nine months off the project. But it does help speed up the project and it does help bring a lot of our stakeholders together and give the county a lot more authority in this project going forward as all of the components up to this point have been kind of piecemealed together from various grants, technical assistances. And in some cases, just the, you know, goodness of people's hearts. Are there any questions on this matter?
Right. Do we have any questions for Ross?
Yes. No, just a comment.
Or comment.
Yes, I just want to say again, thank you, Ross Reed and the RMA Department for your leadership on this very important project. Each day, we're getting closer to finding a solution to the challenges faced in East Rosy. And so again, I appreciate this item coming before the board and showing us that the state is committed to finding a resolution and will continue to do that. And so again, thank you for your work on this.
Thanks Supervisor Valero. Any other questions or comments? Okay, if not, I will bring it back to the board for action.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
Okay, Supervisor Valero moves for approval. Supervisor Vanderpool seconded, and we'll ask for the roll call from Madam Clerk.
Supervisor McCary?
Aye.
Supervisor Vanderpool?
Aye.
Supervisor Shucklian?
Aye.
Supervisor Valero?
Aye.
Supervisor Townsend?
Aye.
Motion passes five zero.
Thank you.
Should we do it? Okay, sorry, I missed public comment on that one. Is there anyone that had a public comment? Kind of just slid right by that. Anybody?
The votes could still change.
They could. All right. Do we take or do we have to recall the vote? Okay, all right. There, let the record show, there were no public comments. All right, thank you. Not now, yeah? All right, and now we're to item number twenty-nine, Board Matter Request. Do any of the members of the board have an item they'd like to see on a future agenda? I don't see any, and we don't have any further need for closed session. All right, so with that, just thanks to all the board staff for coming, helping set up. Thanks to TCICT for putting things together. I know there are a lot of challenges when we move offsite. That's the last one this year, by the way. So you're off the hook for the rest of the time. And thanks to all the staff and all of you for following us over here and to the city of Dinuba for allowing us to use their facilities this evening. And with that, we will adjourn. Have a safe rest of the evening. Bye.